Well, it says if you must put a fence up, that has to be twelve inches on the good side.
Can you tell me if I'm picking up the rest of this team? They had Steve already.
Okay, so Dave Vega, Ron, Kate Barry, I don't know who that is. Oh, that's um.
Yeah, hi, this is Kevin Berry, resident of Forest, Forest Ridge, The Pines.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we're, we're waiting because we don't, we don't have a quorum yet. We just have.
Two members.
Two members. I just heard the door, so I'm hoping. Was it cold standing out there yesterday?
Yes, it was.
That was nice of you.
I'm sorry.
That was nice of you, Bonnie. Can't be in two places at once.
Right, yeah. I'm sorry.
That was nice of you, Bonnie. Can't be in two places at once.
Right, yeah. Yeah, she's, I could hear around four. Stayed for a couple hours. My feet cold, that standing up there. I wish Harry good luck. I wouldn't have done so if I knew who was gonna win, right?
I already knew who won.
Jerry won.
He did.
Yeah, by more than a hundred votes, which is pretty convincing, so.
I didn't know who his name was.
Jerry Stringham. Yeah, nice fellow.
Yeah. Hundred votes, huh? What was that thing they sent, sent out? Did you get it in the post office box?
Yeah, I think a lot.
That's expensive.
Yeah, that's true.
Well, we're still waiting for a forum.
Movement joke. Yeah.
It really is. Yeah, he's right on spot.
Not as bad as OJ, he's getting, he's on COVID.
Just recently? Just recently he came.
Have you read the minutes, Joe?
Don't know if I was here or not, but.
All right, well, let's call the meeting to order. Please note Paul Bowden, OJ Robinson, and Mark German are all excused. Now, we do have a quorum, there are three of us present. First item on the agenda, consideration of the meeting minutes from October tenth. Actually, it should be October twenty-six, twenty-twenty-two. President, myself, OJ Robinson, Steve Knowsworthy, and Paul Bowden. So, we don't have a quorum to approve, so I take motion to skip over that.
On November tenth, I probably was here.
It's actually the twenty-sixth, that's a typo. Is that, is that right, Carol?
Yeah, it's supposed to be the twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
And Joe was excused, and so was Mark.
Actually, October tenth, we didn't have a meeting on the tenth, it was twelve. Anyway. Right, so is there a motion to skip over item two, move on, item three?
One thing I looked over, minutes about three, four weeks ago. You voted on it when I wasn't here.
Yeah.
But it said that I was here the previous meeting, but I was. He left my name off the list.
Okay.
Okay, which, do you remember which date that is?
Yeah, we will fix that.
As I can fix that.
Because the, the, the meeting I was here, they voted on the minutes, but I wasn't here. At the meeting before, I was here, but instead I wasn't here. Didn't see my name on it.
Were you here on the twenty-sixth? Last meeting, we talked about the sign most, pretty much. So these are right, you and Mark were here. Which is another meeting you missed, is what you're saying?
I've been out six months last month or so.
Okay.
But even my father-in-law and Susan.
Are you second in skipping over item two?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, right. Next item. Continuation, continuing another business. Stormwater management plan review of detention ponds and finds it for the ridge has approved in site plan review approval. On September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two, Mount Coolidge Construction LLC conceptually sought a waiver of a portion of the stormwater management ordinance. A waiver of Article Five Stormwater Management Requirement, Section B of the Stormwater Management Ordinance. Section B reaches follows post-development peak runoff rate and volume should not exceed pre-development levels for a twenty-five-year, twenty-four-hour storm event. The request was denied by the planning board owner, Richard Rick Elliott, and I've ceased and Jared Elliott, DVA Mount Coolidge Construction LLC. Three and Mallier Drive, Nashville, New Hampshire, zero-three-zero-six-three. Agent David Jaeger, fifty-seven Flanagan Drive, Birmingham, Mass, oh-one-seven-oh-one. Engineer Mark Brunel, PE, project manager, Horizons Engineering, thirty-four School Street, Littleton, New Hampshire, zero-three-five-six-one. Property. Map fourteen, lot eighty, Woodland Loop Land only, eight-point-two-six acres, in the rural residential II district. Status update, got in detention ponds, finds that horse ridge fall off. David, are you here? Who's here for the pines?
Um, I'm looking at the, Dave, I saw David's name earlier.
I thought I saw him.
I can see him, I'm not sure where he is now.
Carol, you noted all the people are zooming in. Well, there's Ray.
Ray's, Ray's there.
Who's at WB?
I don't know. Oh, that's probably Ray.
Ray Burgland.
Burgland.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, so I'm not seeing David Jaeger. Who's on here earlier.
Yeah. All right.
Um, David, is that you calling in?
I am. For some reason, my Zoom client decided it wanted to update itself in the middle of this. So I thought I'd call in.
Okay, so is this David calling in, or who is calling in?
It's David Jaeger.
Oh, good.
Okay. David, can you give us, give us an update as to what's going on?
Um, sure. I finally found a contractor to start the work to, uh, change the height of the stone berm between the two pools at the pond. And to raise the outflow, um, to the proper height. And hopefully that work starts on Monday, if the weather holds out, which it looks like it will. And, um, that should fix both of those. It probably takes two or three days to get that work done. Um, and then I have the guardrail being installed. Again, hopefully weather holds out. Um. It's scheduled for the eighteenth, but they get pushed out to the week after Thanksgiving. Once that's done, then Horizons will do another, hopefully final ASBILT. And we're hoping to have Horizons on site when the work at the pines pond is being done on Monday.
And the reason for the deficiency is because? Or it was because of contractor error?
I, I don't know. I don't know if it's contractor error, I don't know if it's, um, engineering error, or if it was, you know, just the surveyor error, I don't know. I wasn't there, I didn't watch them do every step of it, but I don't know that it matters right, right now, we're gonna raise the, the head wall up, you know, its proper height, and get it to where it needs to be per the approved design. And then we'll raise the berm up. How that, you know, I mean, when the, the original contractor did that work, they said Horizons was on site. Stopped the elevation, said they were good, so they stopped. And then when the ASBILT got done, it's not right, so I don't know. I don't have an answer for why, I just know it needs to get fixed.
That's fine. All right, does anyone have any questions?
Okay, I think Ray is on.
Yeah, Ray, do you have any, would you like to weigh in?
Uh, no, I think, I think Mr. Jaeger had articulated pretty clearly the, um, I guess I can lend a little bit more detail to, you know, the fix that's being proposed and implemented. Essentially, if you recall, the issue was the, um, the detention pond capacity did not, was not in compliance with the stormwater management ordinance. So the, there's two criteria, discharge rate and volume, and it didn't meet the volume criteria. So, um, essentially the fix is the, to, um, put in weirs, um, in the outlets. Uh, the, there's, there's a twin culvert, two culverts, uh, that discharge, uh, from the ponds. And they will be installing, uh, weirs in those culverts in order to achieve the proper elevation to meet the stormwater management criteria as it relates to volume. So that's, that's, that's a little more detail around that fix, and then the other, the other component is, uh, Mr. Jaeger indicated is to raise the elevation of the embankment between the four bay and the micro pool. They have to raise the elevation about, uh, two feet, uh, and they also have to, um, yeah, set the elevation on the, the spillway. So, um, so we trust that that'll be done, um, I guess next week is what we're hearing, just tonight.
Yes, I hope so.
Okay, so we have a pond, a performance pond, and the amount of eighty-two thousand one hundred and sixty-seven dollars raised, in your opinion, is, would that be enough to fix it, and in the event we have to step in and do it ourselves?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Joe? Steve? And who is, who's gonna take responsibility for the design? It's gonna be Horizon.
Horizons has responded. I'm sorry, David, go ahead.
Yeah, Horizons Engineering is the engineer of record. And they are the same individuals that will produce the ASBILT, uh, which should meet the approved design plans.
Okay.
And I'm hoping to have the ASBILT done, you know, two to three weeks after the work is complete.
Okay.
And then we'll ask to have the bonds removed.
Okay, you're hoping to have this done by the end of the year?
Yeah, I just gave you the date, so, so I'm, I'm hoping they get done before Thanksgiving, or rightly, shortly thereafter.
Yeah. All right. All right, so let's motion, motion of, open up public comment. Joe?
Somebody gives it a dump, wind snow is coming.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah. Well, some people from the condo association, I'd like to see if they have anything they wanna say.
Yeah.
Mr. Barry was here.
All right, Steve, you second in that?
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Would any member of the public like to speak on this?
No, that, I mean, this is Kevin Berry from The Pines, I just wanted to hear what the next steps and timeline were, so appreciate the, um, participation and, and the update from David and, and his group.
Okay, thank you. All right, would anyone else like to speak? All right, motion to close public comment? Joe, second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Does anyone else have any further comments?
Does, who, who's David, another engineer or project manager?
He's the agent.
No, we're, we're part of the bank group that's funded the development of this section of Forest Ridge.
Okay, so why don't we?
Um, just, just wanna make sure, Jim, that, um, we get it on record that the guardrail that we're putting in is per the plan that was submitted back many months ago, it's a steel guardrail that goes from about the beginning of the pond on Woodland Road and continues around into the development. It's about a hundred and seventy-five feet of steel guardrail.
Okay. And I believe, you know, there's some question as to whether or not we require a fence or not, and my revelation is no, we're willing to require the guardrail. Does anyone remember? If anyone remember anything different?
I recommend a fence, but the guardrail was one with approved.
Right, yeah, that's okay, that's fine. All right.
Thank you for calling.
So can I, um, what do you think? Well, maybe Ron can clarify, but I think that the discussion um, was that the fence would interfere with the possible rescue, that people were trying, you know, fell in and they were trying to skim or something on that, that area, so I think that that's one of the rationale they used about getting one of the fence. But I could not find that in the minutes, but it could be, you know, just one of those things that didn't get it.
Right, I mean, we talked about a lot of things.
Right.
Ultimately, that is what we approved. Okay, so I guess we'll have another hearing once we have the ASBILTS and everything's done.
Yeah, hopefully we button it up, you know, certainly before the end of the year, and I'm hoping before, by the early December.
There is a chain link bench detail, but I don't remember where it goes.
Right.
It's on the back page.
Right, it's on, it's on the plans, but I think after those plans were submitted, um, we had discussions about not doing the fence, only doing.
Right.
Correct. Spencer would feed someone trying to get over, let somebody get into it.
Okay, so, good for tonight, we'll see you all. Go ahead.
This meeting, we can continue to another date specific, or we're gonna have to post it again, post it again with our butter notice?
All right, have we notified your butters on this?
Um, no, you didn't want me to.
Right.
I was asking for a status update.
Right.
But, um, but probably they couldn't do the, uh, the butters' notice.
Probably when we release the bond, I would think, because we'd want.
Release the bond.
Because we want the homeowner to weigh in, just to make sure, because once, once the bond goes away and the developer goes away, it's gonna be on them, we wanna, we wanna make sure they're protected.
Well, Jim, the, um, yeah, I just wanna let you know that, you know, many months ago, the, the pines was turned over to its association members.
Okay.
So, you know, they, they, they now own the association, the developer turned it over because it was substantially complete. So, you know, um, the bond was really between the town and the developer.
Right.
It was the town that required the bond.
Right.
Okay, well, I, I believe that I have the email address, uh, I mean, you can let me know whether you want me to do, um, the butter notices, but I do have the email address for all of the component parts of, I mean, the people who are, um, presidents of the various associations and all saying for the guy who is the president of the times.
Right.
The homeowners association, so I, I could do, um, reach out to them by email.
Good, think about it.
Yeah, this, this is Kevin, I am on The Pines Board.
Yeah.
And I'm just trying to, you know, David, you had made a comment that it was turned over to The Pines Board, was there a resolution that was signed by the board members of The Pines? There should have been, again, I, I'm, I'm not the developer, but I know that we got a copy of a letter that was sent from the developer, at the time it was Rick Elliott, when he was still alive, to the association. Um, you know, officially turning over the association to the owners of the pines.
All right.
You know, if, if, you know.
Yeah.
If you don't have, uh, proper documentation, I mean, maybe it's in the archives somewhere, but now, you know, that's in the hands of his son and daughter.
Okay.
And who are relatively non-responsive, which is why I'm finishing the pond and the guardrail and so on. Well, I, yeah, I know, I, I just have to, you know, for the meeting minutes here, for the, for this meeting, I, I just wanna make sure that I'm, I'm going to look at that as a follow-up with our board member, with our president. If he had signed it, um, because, you know, as you know, David, there's, there's four units that are still not completed. Correct. Okay.
Jimmy just stated, I don't interfere tonight with the development is, uh.
That's, that's between the bodies about turn, who's in control of the association, it's not, nothing to it.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we were on record there, that I'm not aware of that resolution, but I, I will certainly follow up on it.
I mean.
Yeah, follow up and let me know if there's, if there's documentation you and I need to sort out, we'll sort it out. Yeah, we, we may need to, David. Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I have to dig it out through Rick's records, which are shambles, but, well, I'm sure we can find some documentation, if not, we'll redo it if it needs to get redone. Okay, thank you. Yeah, no problem.
Okay, so we'll have another meeting when it's all complete. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you very much.
My pleasure, have a good night, everyone. Yeah, have a good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye now. Uh, Jim, are you all set with me?
Like, well, I need you for the next one. Just around for a couple of minutes.
Happy to, yep.
All right, I'm Kate, we got drainage problem between Burgland, Eleven School Street, map one-one-three, lot ninety-eight, and Ludwig, twelve Pleasant Street, map one-one-three, lot ninety-two. And plans for solution complaining board meeting of June eighth, twenty-twenty-two. On June eighth, twenty-twenty-two, and then August tenth, twenty-twenty-two, Raymond Ray Burgland, owner of Eleven School Street, map one-thirteen, lot ninety-eight, updated the planning board on the drainage issues between his property and the property of Jane Ludwig at twelve Pleasant Street, map one-one-three, lot ninety-two. Burgland planned to put a fence between twelve Pleasant Street and eleven School Street. His plan entailed creating a retaining wall in the rear of eleven School Street, of the eleven School Street property with a above-ground drainage runoff system to force water down to a dry well. He was going to add French drains as well, he was going to install fencing after the drainage problems are fixed, and the fence would be seven inches of the property of eleven School Streets, which would still allow both properties access to their garages. He was to email the plans, plan a bond, Mr. Burgland asked to have this matter put on the agenda for September twenty-twenty-two. On October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-two, at the last planning board meeting, Jan Ludwig, Jane Ludwig asked the planning board to request a status update. There's nothing has been done today.
We have a, we only have two.
Right, so unfortunately, we don't have a forum to hear this tonight.
Oh.
Uh, so I think we're gonna have to put this off to another future meeting.
All right, because the problem is, uh, this for our audience, um, Steve Knowsworthy, um, looks like he aggressed, and so he has, has refused himself, he stepped down uh, from the board, so there's now only two, um, two city members, we need three for a forum.
Right.
I'm not sure who the iPhone is, I assume it's not OJ, because OJ was not there when they say OJ, so. You want me to call OJ?
Well, I mean, you need three in the room, I believe.
Oh, correct, yeah.
So, so unfortunately, we can't move forward here.
We get it, there's three political bodies and borders, right?
Right, so let's, why don't we continue this to the twenty-second?
It's fine, okay, um, is that all right with you, Ray? Raymond and Burgland?
Yeah, 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 it's okay with me. I mean, you, you can get the plans, and I think we, we're, we're just about there on what to do, just, uh, Jane and I are gonna chat about it, um. And, uh, sorry I've been so busy, but yeah, absolutely, perfectly fine with me, I just need, I just need to make sure, Carol, that I get your emails because for some reason I didn't, uh, see that, know this until today, so, um, as long as we can do that, I'm, I'm fine, we can, we can figure out another time.
Okay, now that, that particular meeting is, um, uh, on a Tuesday, which is not a day that we normally meet. But it's Thanksgiving week, and so that's why we're meeting on the Tuesday, so it's November twenty, on a Tuesday. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'm blocking it on my calendar now, and I will, uh, I'll make sure I get the link for that.
Okay, thank you, and again, if the bodies can work it out before then, that's, you know, that's appreciated too.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, and, all right, record, I think we're finished now.
I think we're finished, Ray. Hey, Ray, bye, Ray.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you guys, talk to you later.
All right, I'm signing off as well, good night, everybody.
Yay.
Thanks, Ray.
Sign ordinance, we don't really have a full board. They will ask for another meeting. Any new business?
Um, no, but we're gonna have a very.
Full agenda on the twenty-second.
Okay, we have, I think, three, uh, two full hearings, uh, site plan review, uh, subdivision.
We got the coffee, the cafe.
Uh, yeah, last site plan review.
Okay.
Uh, subdivision, we're Gary property up at the top of that mansion hill.
Okay.
And then, um, a, another second conceptual for the hotel, opposed, um, residence area next to the town office.
That's only conceptual?
Um, it's not con, it's, it's not a full-blown site plan review, but they've done some, some shuffling around and they don't wanna go full bore unless they talk to you conceptually about.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, so, yeah. And then rendition, well, we just talked about it.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we have a full agenda, so.
Okay.
So, versus saying.
All right, does anyone have any, any public participation? Any other business?
No.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Steve, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, meaning to adjourn.
It was amazing.
Yes, thank you for coming. Yes, thank you for coming.